Good evening, everyone. We will get started. I will call this meeting of the City of Albany Planning and Zoning Commission to order Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. And I will start with the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Leishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And with that, we can do the roll call.
Great. Commissioner Moaman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pilch?
Present.
Commissioner Wadi? And Chair McLoughlin?
Here.
Great.
Then we will move on to item number three, ex parte communications. Have there been any note? No. Okay. None for me either. And then we will move on to item four, the consent calendar, of which there are three items. Item four dash one, meeting minutes of December 11th, 2024. Item four dash two, 1446 Portland Avenue. And item four dash three, 1126 Brighton Avenue. And I understand Commissioner Pilch needs to be recused for 1446 Portland Avenue. So do, let's go, do any commissioners want to pull any of these items from the consent Must be since you're accused from the other ones. Okay. So Commissioner Pilch has requested that 1126 Brighton Avenue was pulled from the consent calendar. Therefore, it will have a full presentation by staff and we'll do the normal procedure for that. Is there any member of the public who would like to pull any of these items from the consent calendar, either here in person or online?
If there's an item on the consent calendar, either the minutes or at this point, planning application 24-043, which is 1446 Portland Avenue from the consent calendar, please raise your hand or either if you're in the chambers or virtually if you're participating
Well, and I think we could move ahead with four dash one, four dash two on the consent calendar if there's a motion and you-
Yep. Happy to make a motion to approve items four dash one and four dash two as proposed.
May I, I sent an email earlier today about a recommended condition, revision to the condition regarding mechanical equipment. And I'd like to read it into the record and recommend that the, this would replace the conditions for Portland. It would be condition number 12. So it would, it would state that mechanical equipment must comply with all regulations pursuant to municipal code sections 20, 24180, 20, 24110, and 203620 as applicable. No exhaust may be blown on neighboring properties. Building permit plan shall show the location of all mechanical equipment as well as details of existing or proposed screening and means to prevent exhaust from blowing over the property line.
So I'm happy to amend my motion to be inclusive of that staff recommended change to the condition.
I did have a question about that. That, because we're going to discuss that item later, then all those changes would apply that we agree on later.
Correct. So yes, for the public later this evening, we've been trying to pass amendments to our mechanical equipment ordinance to reduce setbacks and to allow just additional, to have additional allowances for the replacement. So this would actually, this condition instead of kind of codifying existing regulations would allow the flexibility that whatever the commission and ultimately recommends and ultimately the city council passes, it would be subject to those conditions.
Okay. Sounds great. Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Let's take the vote. Commissioner Wadi?
I with an abstention on four dash one since I wasn't at the December 11th hearing.
Okay. And Commissioner Moaman?
Yes.
I vote yes also. So those two items pass. Four dash two is approved. Planning application 24-043, 1446 Portland Avenue. That's approved. So if there are story pulls up, they should remain up for 14 days during the appeal period. So that one's done. We will move on to item five, announcements, communications, discussion. Does staff? Oh, I'm sorry. We have to do Brighton. I'm sorry. I'm completely mixed up. Oh, can we have, I'm sorry. Let's go back up. Four dash three. We have staff presentation, please.
And I'm not requesting a full presentation. And I'm not requesting a full presentation, but staff is welcome to do one as well.
And who's recused from Brighton?
No.
No one. I'm sorry. That was Portland and, okay. I don't know why I got Brighton. Thank you.
Turn on the microphone. Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the public and staff. So yeah, I'm here to present the design review application 24-045 for 1126 Brighton Avenue. That's the project location, as you were also able to see on the plans and the staff report. This is the property from Street View, of course, from, you know, Google Street View, you cannot really see that much, but fortunately the applicant included a photograph of the existing conditions. As you can see, it was a very dilapidated property. So the project request is to demolish that one-story, single-family residence and detached garage at the rear to construct a new approximately 1,779 square feet or square foot, two-story, single-family dwelling unit. All right. So here's the site plan and what I did, and I'm not sure if that's very visible here, unfortunately, but the dotted line in orange depicts the footprint of the existing home just for comparison purposes. So that's the site plan, existing elevation. So the reason why staff had placed this project in the consent calendar is because the project meets all development standards. So yeah, these are the existing elevations. The proposed structure outline is also presented on the dotted line. These are the proposed elevations. So as you can see here on the rendering and the proposed elevation, the design guidelines, residential design guidelines call for garages not to be more than 60% or they need to be hopefully like less than 60%, sorry, less than 40% from the building width. However, for very narrow lots, this is really hard to or almost impossible to achieve without putting the garage or the interior dimensions out of compliance or even the whole structure out of compliance in terms of the setbacks. So in this case, we feel that, we felt like things staff that by the applicant, I don't know, yeah, here. So what they did in their, in their previous design, the porch section was pulled back from the garage. So what they did in this, you know, updated design was to bring the roof, the covered roof of the porch in alignment with the garage wall and then emphasize it a little bit more by adding, you know, by using very attractive, more attractive materials and colors, as you can see here. So vertical board and battened siding on the side and re-walls at the lower level and the roof gables, board shingles on the front facade inside and re-upper level walls. Also, the front of the covered porch is open to kind of evoke entry pergola and also to help the project meet the FAR limit. So yeah, with this, you already, you know, read, must have read the staff report and the plans, so you must be sort of familiar with the project. This project qualifies for exceptional design as it exceeds 45% FAR as that the designers made extra efforts to apply treatments for the crackland-style house, which include a mix of modern materials and textures, plain differentiation by setting the second story back, new fiberglass clad recessed windows with simulated divided lights and new landscape throughout. So yeah, and staff has not received any correspondences in regards to this project proposal. And we recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission, I mean, we, staff, review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval with the modified condition number 13, mechanical equipment, as our planning manager explained previously, and an added condition of approval number eight for the building permit, I'm sorry, plans to depict a driveway whose width does not exceed the width of the garage door plus an allowance of six inches on either end. So yeah, that concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions for the applicant or for staff.
Anyone have any questions for staff? Nick?
So the FAR, the FAR is .45, correct? Is what I see in the staff report.
Let me take a look.
I thought it went higher. It was .6?
Yeah. It's 45.
45?
Yeah. So it's 45 or more. So.
Okay. But we allow up to 55.
Right. But that's separate. So the 55% is written in the code and the 45% threshold is written in the residential design guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah. For exceptional design. So yeah, a lot of the projects we bring to commission end up exceeding that 45%, which is still under the 55%, but it's still kind of written in the guidelines and calls for exceptional design review.
So this is or is not exceeding 45?
It is 45. A little, yeah. So it exceeds that.
45 plus a little, teeny bit?
Yeah. But the point is that even if it didn't, the staff finds that the project has a lot of merit in terms of the mix of materials and, you know, so.
I agree with that. No, I'm just curious because we, it was stated in some correspondence we had, you stated that they did make some changes to the porch and they were considered FAR when doing so. And that's one of the reasons. And you just mentioned, I believe, that the reason that the, there's an open part of the porch roof is for the FAR calculation. And, and the reason why I, and so that was my question. I'll go into why I asked that question as soon as we can go into comments.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Maybe just one quick one. Just wanted to clarify on the window muttons here. It's called out as three-dimensional, but it looks like it has, it doesn't have a spacer bar in between the panes. So it's sort of three-dimensional on the interior, exterior, which usually isn't the type of simulated that we approve on the commission. Usually if we're doing simulated, it's 3D on the interior, exterior and spacer bar in between, so they read as true. And so I just wanted to clarify, it looked like on sheet A6, it's calling it out without that spacer bar. And I wasn't sure if that was intentional or not.
Let me bring up the plans. Thank you.
Or maybe if we could just have the applicant come up or if there's an architect or designer who's here for it, we could just ask them.
Is the applicant here? Is that you?
If you guys want to just come up and-
Come up and we'll ask, you could present your project and then we could ask a few questions, I suppose.
So I could talk about the design iterations, if that's right, Mira? Or so originally, the porch roof was recessed back about eight feet. And that was because if it's a covered porch and it has two walls, the third wall is the roof and it kicks us over the FAR allowances. So we've created an opus trellis look there. We're trying to bring a wood design element into the entryway, so it didn't feel like a long porch. It kind of brought in some aesthetics there. And so what we did is we tried to bring out a gable porch or gable roof element that is just over the porch to bring your eye to the porch level. And then for the windows, the muttons should be a simulated divided light, so there should be a spacer bar in the middle there.
Sorry, should or should not?
It should.
Okay.
It will, I guess. It will.
Okay. And so I think in terms of how the spec sheet on, I think the last page of the plan set comes, the one that comes from Anderson, I think, it looks like Anderson. It should, they spec it as being called a full divided light when there's that spacer bar in between out of all of their options. It's the third one there.
This one?
Yeah. The third one, if you read the description there, what they call a full divided light is permanently applied to exterior and interior with a spacer bar in between the glass, whereas the simulated quote unquote does not have that, the far, the fourth option. So I just wanted to clarify which of those two we were talking about.
If that's a heartache, we're fine with doing the full divided light for the front two windows.
Okay.
That's okay.
Always a misnomer because it's like not a real full. It's a simulated full.
You know, whether you talk to Marvin or Anderson, a simulated divided light is-
Different terminology, same principle. Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Great. So that's the intent, that it'll be spacer bar in between. You guys are all right with that?
So Commissioner Wadi, we could add a condition of approval with that specific language that it should be, it must be a full divided light.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's the thing is obviously these are, you know, double-pane winzos. We don't usually see a traditional like full piece of wood that goes through the two panes, which is what we, what normally is referred to as a full. So I'm fine with using the language simulated so that long as we're explicit about the space, there's a spacer bar, sort of a dark colored spacer bar between the two simulated.
Sure. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you for that clarification.
No. So, so what this is showing is the simulated divided light is, is a three-dimensional.
Wait a minute. If you're going to speak, you're going to have to speak into the microphone.
So it just seems like on the backside of it, it is 3D. I think it's just on the interior that it's not 3D. It's not, it's not-
Those two represent the same thing in terms of the interior and exterior glass. It's just that in between the double painting, there's no spacer bar on one and there's spacer bar in between the two panes of glass on the other option. So what we're saying is when you have the spacer bar, it feels more like a, like an old-school, traditional divided light window and that's sort of the look that we normally support on that.
That's okay. We're definitely not going to do a true divided light.
Right. Which makes sense for double-pane windows.
Yeah. So we're fine with doing the full divided light as a condition of approval. There's only two windows there, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's-
Should we go to public comment and-
Yes. Public comment. Anyone in the room care to comment on this project or anyone online?
You wish to comment, please use the raise the hand icon.
Yes. And Commissioner Pilch? Good catch. You're right. In my staff report, I wrote that the total FAR was 45% and it's not. It's 60%. 60%.
Yeah. I thought it was six-
Yes. Yeah, yeah. It's 60%. So in order not to exceed that 60%, and in certain lots that are smaller, the code says that we, the plan commission can approve an FAR up to 60% when the strict application of the 55% FAR would result in a house that is less than 1,500. So in this case, that was the case. So 16, 60% would be approvable by the plan commission per the code. However, the original design with the covered porch was going over the 60%, which is why they opened it. So yeah, good catch. Thank you.
Got you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. We'll close public comment and move to commissioner discussion. Does anyone wish to discuss the project? Any comments?
Well, I can start since I brought it up. I don't, I think it's, the point is moot now that I've gotten more information about this. I was just, I know that the, I was, staff communicated to me that the applicants had taken pains to actually bring the front of the porch to the same plane as the garage where it wasn't before. So that's great because I do agree with the design guidelines that you don't want the garage sticking out in front. You don't want that to be the main visible feature of the house. But given the constraints of this lot and the, and the FAR, I don't see much more that they could do. I was going to ask if the architects in the room had any idea if there's any way we could bring the porch even farther to the front, but I think it's probably not even worth the discussion at this point. So I will stand down unless anyone has any other comments.
Anyone else?
I just have a question to staff. Now, since the FAR is .6, this project is now subject to exceptional design guidelines, right?
So yes, the exceptional design threshold is 45% per the design, residential design guidelines.
So previously you mentioned that because it was less than about 45%. It was not subject to exceptional design guidelines, but it is because it is, the actual FAR is .6 now.
Yeah.
So does that change anything?
It doesn't really. Yeah. Good question. But no, it doesn't because it would have anyway be qualify, if it, even if it was 45% FAR, it would automatically qualify as exceptional design, which calls for high-quality materials, more attention to detail to the architectural design, et cetera. So yeah.
Yeah. Or it looks like, you know, they have catered to all of those, but are there any specific conditions that are not being complied?
In terms of exceptional design, we know, for projects that we have or in, the plan commission has reviewed in the, in the past, which have had, have happened to be exceptional design projects, we do apply the standard conditions of approval because we feel that those cover pretty much. If we're going to approve, if you are going to approve a design, then basically what the conditions of approval are saying is that at the building permit stage, the plan should reflect exactly the design that was approved. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to add real quick that I think it's a great design. I have no problem with the design.
Yeah. I'll just iterate. I think this is a great design. Fine with it as proposed. So I make a motion to approve item four dash three with the amendment to clarify that the windows will have full divided lights.
Do we have a second?
And with the mechanical condition that was previously referenced for the other item.
Okay. Let's go to a vote. Commissioner Moaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pilch? Commissioner Wadi?
Hi.
And I will vote yes as well. So that motion passes 4-0. That project is approved. That's planning application 24-045, 1126 Brighton Avenue. Won't be story pulls up, I don't think, right? Or no? If there are, they need to remain up for 14 days till the end of the appeal period. Yeah. And I just want to say, yes, thank you for improving that property. It's in time for that property to be improved. It's a, yeah, welcome addition. Okay. So all the items on the consent calendar are approved. If you're here for 11, for 1446 Portland Avenue, that's been approved. So consent calendar is done. I think that's you, 14? Yes. Your project is approved. Unless you want to stay and watch the whole hearing, you're welcome, but you're free to go if you want. Okay. Moving on to item five, announcements, communications, discussion. Does staff have anything for us?
Not too much. I do want to say happy new year and it's nice to see you all. We will be going to two meetings again regularly. We are hoping to still condense where possible into one month, but starting, well, this month, we potentially may have a meeting in two weeks. We have to check what we can get finalized. Other than that, like every other city, we have launched our pre-approved ADU program. And what that means for our city is we haven't actually created any or solicited designs ahead of time, but we are soliciting for any architects or designers who want to have their ADU designs kind of pre-approved, kind of the shell of it. I mean, it's more than the shell, everything but the site-specific. We have that process up. So once we get some folks to submit designs and get them pre-approved, they will be available to the public. And hopefully that will facilitate even more development of ADUs, so.
Also include like manufacturer?
It does. Yes. The one requirement is that it is detached ADUs and it is for single-family properties only. So information is available on our website under the ADU webpage. So if you're interested. And finally, as you know, this is the last meeting of this current configuration, so I do hope you've all applied again. And I definitely hope if you have applied that you'll be appointed. And either way, I want to thank each and every one of you for the time you've put on this commission and just your expertise and your dedication. So thank you. And I do hope to see you for the rest of the year. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pilch, you have a-
Yes. Can I just add on to that? Thank you, by the way. And it might not be the last meeting of this configuration, depending on who applied. But I did talk to a council member who told me that he, at the time that I spoke with him, there were only four applications for this body of five. So if anyone knows, if anyone else who might be good or interested, please let them know that there might very well be another spot. That is all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Let's see. Moving on to item six, public comment. For persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the commission's ability to take and or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment or online?
You'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please use the raise the hand icon.
We have one person who would like to make a-
Great.
Public comment. Can you come to the front, please?
Hi. Thank you for your time. Hi. My name is Mark Backman. I live on Pomona Avenue. We are finishing up, wrapping up an addition to our home. And the process has been relatively smooth, but there's been a, I think, one of the big issues for me, and several of my neighbors are going through this right now, have been a lot of misunderstanding around fire suppression systems. There are now sort of requirements, as I understand, of the city for many, what I view as fairly modest upgrades that require a full install of fire sprinklers in the entire home. For us, for my wife and I, this is, ended up being about 5% of the total cost of the project. You can speculate whether that seems reasonable or not, but it was more than I expected. The, and I guess I have two points. One is, in my opinion, I'm not sure all the occasions that seem to trigger the requirement that the entire home be retrofitted with sprinklers are, I'm not sure that it should be as stringent as it is. I think it's a little too stringent. But then my other point is more of a public service announcement. I think for I and several of our neighbors, we've had plans approved for fire suppression systems by contractors that have been on lists that you can get in the city for doing this kind of work, where the final plans require some kind of meter upgrade, saying, hey, we're going to upgrade the water meter, should be trivial to get a little bit more pressure, the output being the only change, the input of the meter being the same as it is currently. These, East Bay Mud has changed the way it deals with this in the last year, as I understand it, such that any upgrade by East Bay Mud, when I've contacted them, as have several of my neighbors, this is a, they now require that you do what they call a one-inch upgrade. I mean, you got to dig up the street and do all this stuff, which means a minimum, a minimum of an $18,000 project, just to get the water pressure you need. So even if we don't address some of the, some of my gripes about what triggers this, there are many cases where clearly we need fire suppression systems. That's great. I think we need to communicate more clarity to the community that designs that require water meter upgrade should be avoided and they can be in many cases. In our case, we found a way to do this, but it was a costly detour to get to that point. And I don't think the city should- And I don't think the city should approve, in most cases, any plans that require a water meter upgrade. I don't think East Bay Mud wants you to do that, and it is immensely costly. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. I mean, just a general response is that it's mostly dictated by fire codes and also by major remodel or new construction where fire sprinklers are required. So there's sort of very clear triggers. And in the past, the city fire marshal has worked with the fire suppression companies to try to avoid meter upgrades because it is expensive. So I don't know where that stands at the moment, but the city does recognize that meter upgrades are expensive, and I think they've tried to work around that with the fire suppression companies to keep the system working within the usual 5/8 inch meter. So that's all I can really say about that. But, all right, any other comments? Anyone else online or?
If anyone online wishes to speak, please use the raise the hand icon. Nope.
Okay, moving on to item 7-1. Commissioner Moen will be recused. This is Planning Application 24-046, 833 Polk Street. And that is a variance and design review request to construct a new 42-square-foot upper-level deck at the rear of the house. The project requires a variance to construct the deck within five feet, seven and one-quarter inches of the rear property line, where a maximum 14-foot rear yard setback is required for decks. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Right, but you've very well described the whole project, so.
Well, there we go.
But I'll probably just repeat what our chair mentioned. So yes, it's a variance and design review application for 833 Polk Street. That's the project location, and as you can see, it's a very small, comparatively short or not deep enough, I guess, lot. And the home is already located with a very small rear yard setback. Per the survey, I believe that the setback is about nine feet something, where our code, current code, requires a 20-foot rear setback. So it's already, the house itself is already kind of encroaching into the current development standard. So that's, this is a 3D rear view of the home and the approximate deck location. And so, yes, as the chair was mentioning, the project request is to construct a 42-square-foot upper-level deck at the rear east of the house, which would basically have, per the plans, a depth of four feet, which is pretty modest and would not even allow, like, for big gatherings or parties. It's just a modest, upper-level, you know, small deck. But the variance, of course, is required to construct a deck within approximately five feet, seven inches and a quarter of the rear property line, where a maximum 14-yard setback is required for decks. This is the side plan, so that reflects, you know, where the new deck in hashed, you know, like, the dark hashed area is, that's the new deck, and the setback would be, you know, it's a little bit less than that, than 5/8. And so these are the existing and proposed elevations. That's from the rear, the upper-level deck, from the sides, left and right, north and south. And so the front would have no change. These are the proposed materials and colors. Neutral stained redwood deck with black metal cable railing and black aluminum folding doors to match existing black aluminum windows, within the same opening. They're not enlarging the existing window. There's a window there with the same opening. So we did receive a call, not in, it wasn't a written correspondence, but we received a call from a neighbor who was concerned about the size of the deck, and we communicated with the neighbor and we guided the neighbor to take a look at the plans that were posted online. And at that point, at the point of his call, it doesn't seem that he had been able to access the plans, but after he communicated and, you know, the applicant reached out to this neighbor and they communicated, you know, and they discussed the plans, the applicant reached out and CC'd staff and let us know that the communication seemed to have clarified that the deck would not be facing any of the windows, any windows, basically, from any neighboring properties. And staff actually went to the site for, to conduct a site visit, and yes, that window really doesn't face any bedroom window or any bedroom at all directly. And we believe, staff believes that, you know, given the, well, here's also like the logic, that the current code allows decks or upper-level decks to encroach in a way that would have to be at least three to five feet from the side property line. So we see that since this would be located more than five feet away from the rear yard, we find merit in that, given, you know, that the property already has various, you know, special conditions being substandard in depth. So, yeah, staff is supportive of the project request and appreciative of the applicant's efforts in communicating with their neighbor. So, yeah. We recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews and approves the proposed project, subject to the findings and conditions for approval, with the modified condition number 13 for mechanical equipment, and the added condition that the building permit plans reflect the size and location of the proposed deck. This is basically to ensure, I guess, that, and kind of give peace of mind, right, to the concerns of many, of this neighbor in particular. But, yeah, basically, you know, it's the default condition of approval, but just to make sure that the location and the size of the deck at the building permit stage will reflect what is approved tonight, if it is approved. So that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yes, so you stated that the new door, there'll be a new door, but it's in the same, it's the same size as the existing window?
Correct.
Except that perhaps the window does not go down to the ground, I imagine.
It is the same exact opening. It's a large window, and they're just adding, replacing the window. Right, they're replacing the window, which is a very, very large window, and replacing it with an openable door.
Okay.
To access the deck, yeah.
Got it, that was my only question. Thank you.
No other questions? I don't have any questions. Do we have the applicant here? Online?
Is the applicant here? Oh, I think that's the property owner or applicant. They have raised their hand.
Martin? Hello? Hi, this is Martin.
Hi, if you would just like to give us a brief overview of your project, just a couple of minutes?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, basically, the yard is rather small and it's on the lower level. We wanted an area where when you're, you know, going to have your morning coffee or something like that, you have like the ability to step outside without having to go all the way downstairs into a very small yard. So it's really just, we just wanted to add in kind of like a, it's really more of a balcony than a deck. But I believe through working with Mira and speak, after speaking with the neighbor behind me, we had actually just missed each other, so I had reached out to him and then he had reached out to me, and we had missed each other when he sent the correspondence to Mira or to the planning department with his concerns. But at this point, I think he said that he was fine. He might be here tonight. I don't know if he is. He could raise his hand, but he seemed to, after he saw the plans, he realized that he was more concerned about the deck going farther north on our property and therefore, like, looking back into his bay window, which it doesn't do. It just is, it basically is just facing like this, the view. It's a really nice view off of that upper area, so I think that, I don't know if there are any specific questions for me or if I can help shed more light on this.
I don't think we have any more questions. Just thank you for the brief overview. I think we understand what you're trying to achieve. So we will go ahead and close this item to public comment and move.
Well, we haven't, that was the applicant, so we haven't.
Oh, we haven't done public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let's move to comment.
Yes, so if anyone else wishes to speak on this project, please use, come up to the, and/or raise the hand icon.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. My name is John Montag, and I'm the owner with my wife of 887 Solano Avenue, and staff and the applicant, what they said is essentially correct. I reached out to staff and the applicant responded to me ultimately and resolved kind of my concern. And my understanding with staff is that there's a setback is going to be put in place and not encroached, as per your staff report and what I've heard, so at this point, seems to be aligned with my understanding. So I want to thank staff and the applicant for hearing my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone online? No, for public comment?
If anyone else wishes to speak, please use the raise the hand icon. Nope.
Okay, now I will close this item to public comment and move to Commissioner Discussion. Comments, please?
Sure, I'm happy to start. I actually had the same initial thought that the property owner mentioned when I first saw this, that to me, this is less of a deck and more of a balcony. It seems really like the kind of place where maybe you have a two-top there and you're able to have your morning coffee, but it doesn't even really seem big enough to, you know, entertain or put a dining room table or anything like that. So I don't think there's going to be, you know, noise impacts or excessive privacy impacts. It seems just more of having a little more breathing space, opening the doors, sort of some indoor-outdoor and the ability to step outside. So this, to me, seems incredibly de minimis and just helps, you know, make more contemporary the small homes in Albany. And so, not to preempt others' comments, but I would be more than happy to make a motion to approve with the amended conditions that staff previously mentioned for mechanical equipment. Thanks.
Commissioner Pilch, anything to say?
Nothing to add. I'm fine with the project.
Okay, well, I would just add, yeah, it seems perfectly reasonable, like you said, de minimis. Yeah, and it kind of goes along with side setbacks. This is such a small lot, you know, and it just feels like a little breathing space, breathing room for the upstairs rooms, the common rooms, and perfectly reasonable in my mind. So that, if there is a motion.
I think I made one, but I'll make it more formally. I'm happy to make a motion to approve item 7-1 for 833 Polk Street with the condition for mechanical equipment as revised by staff.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Wadi?
Aye.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So that item has been approved, 3 to 0. And we will move on to. 7-2. Yeah, Planning and Zoning Sections Regarding Accessory Buildings and Accessory Structures. More of a policy item, so.
Good evening. I am Leslie Mendez, Planning Manager, and tonight I am hoping, which is to bring you what I hope is a quick kind of cleanup amendment related to accessory structures. So the Planning and Zoning Code defines a structure as anything constructed or erected which requires a location on the ground. It defines a building as any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls for the housing or enclosure of persons or property of any kind. An accessory building as an attached subordinate building, the use of which is clearly incidental to that of a main building or to the use of the land. To ensure required yard areas and accessways remain substantially open and unobstructed and that accessory buildings are used in a manner consistent with the general plan and the rest of the code, Section 2024.130 of the zoning ordinance establishes regulations for accessory buildings in residential districts. With a few exceptions, such as wireless facilities, however, the code is silent on regulations that apply to accessory structures that do not meet the definition of an accessory building, as well as any accessory structure outside of residential districts. Types of accessory structures that do not meet the definition of a building include such things as outdoor cooking facilities and recreational installations. Property owners commonly request information on or permission to install a variety of accessory structures on properties throughout the cities. And with a void in regulatory guidance, staff has been inconsistent in response, at times applying standards for accessory buildings when deemed applicable and other times prohibiting such installation of these, of these structures. Purposes of the amendments are therefore to fill this regulatory void and provide transparency, consistency, and clarity to property owners that accessory structures, with some exceptions to allow for flexibility, have the same standards as accessory buildings and ensure placement and use of all accessory structures and buildings are used in a manner consistent with the general plan and the zoning ordinance. So just a summary of the amendment says that were included in the packet this evening are that the definitions, to modify the definition of building for clarity, to create a definition for accessory structure itself, to expand the section 2024.130 to apply to all accessory structures throughout the city, and then to list the types of accessory structures regulated elsewhere in the code. Clearly show regulations of four things such as ADUs, fences, wireless facilities, or mechanical equipment, as we'll be discussing later tonight, as well as to exempt public facilities, the zoning district, from these regulations, to allow for things such as sports installation like goalposts or emergency responder equipment, which is typical of the uses of schools, parks, as well as police and fire that are located in this district. Additionally, just to clarify, have additional restrictions and flexibility of such restrictions. Proposal to remove the restriction prohibiting full bathrooms within accessory structures. Clarify exemptions to allow temporary placement of accessory structures on vacant lots. Establish specific setbacks and regulations on outdoor cooking facilities and fire pits to ensure public safety, as well as to allow height exceptions to accommodate certain common accessory structures, such as basketball hoops and other similar sporting equipment, as well as flagpoles. And then finally, to eliminate the option to exceed established standards for treehouses. Currently, the code allows for a variance, but the variance findings would never be able to be made to support such a variance, as well as, as there are no building code requirements for treehouses, we feel that keeping them within the established standards will ensure additional safety measures for those playing in treehouses. So with that, staff does recommend that the commission approve Resolution 2025-01, recommending that the city council adopt the amendments to the zoning code related to accessory structures. And upon recommendation, staff will schedule for the next available city council meeting for review and adoption. That ends my presentation, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay, questions for staff? Anyone? Commissioner Moen?
Okay, I'll start. Did you, where did you, did you use any resources to pull the definition for accessory structures or any of the code? Was the National Code a guideline for you, or where did some of your stuff come from?
Well, we already had a definition of structure, so we, I. Um, well, we already had a definition of structure, so we, I, so no, um, it was mimicking our definition for accessory building, but relating that to structure as opposed to building, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Moment?
Um, thanks for the presentation. I think it's very clear. One question, uh, one code section I'm not very clear about is, uh, you know, we talk about, uh, rear setback coverage where, uh, the size of the accessory building cannot exceed thirty percent of required setback area or more than thirty percent of the entire rear yard. So what happens when the yard is, you know, already non-compliant? Would accessory structure still be permitted and how the, the max size would be, you know, um, determined?
That is, so it already is, is covered more than thirty percent, is that what?
No, I think, you know, we, we just discussed, you know, a kind of similar project.
Oh, right, right, right.
If rear yard is not compliant, you know, we don't have twenty feet deep rear yard already, and then if someone applies for, uh, an accessory structure.
That's a very good question. So, um, that is a really good question. I, that is something that I actually didn't change in the ordinance and I'm trying to find the, can you point me to the section so I can?
Uh, it's in the, let me see, in the clear, another version, it's.
Oh, here, rear coverage three, yeah.
E two, oh, sorry, uh, E three.
I think the way that, uh, staff would interpret that is it couldn't cover more than thirty percent of the rear yard that is in existence. So for the non-conforming yard that we saw previously, you know, more than thirty percent of that yard.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that, that's it.
Thank you.
Um, I just, uh, Commissioner Wadi, any questions? No? Um, I guess I just had a, just kind of a clarification between structure and building. Um, you know, I do a lot of work in Berkeley and basically, structure is non-habitable and a building is habitable. But there are, um, gray areas and then some of the buildings are dwellings.
Right.
And some are not. And then they have this sort of distinction where if you got a bathroom into a structure, it can become a building and be considered a bedroom. So I don't know. You know, I was sort of wondering, what are some examples of structures versus buildings that you could give us?
So that would be, uh, the one slide. So a structure that wouldn't be a building would be, it, things like a climbing wall or a skateboard ramp or, um, a flagpole, a basketball, um, back, a hoop and backboard, anything that isn't, kind of have walls in a building. I think that many jurisdictions had very stringent definitions on what a structure was, what a, what a building was and what a kind of accessory dwelling unit was. And then the state kind of said, well, you know, it, so it, all of a sudden, it's, it's a little, um, anachronistic to be over-regulating structures and buildings when you can have a whole dwelling unit, but, oh, you can have a structure. So part of this is to relax that a little bit and not try to divide. I was almost going to eliminate accessory building altogether, but it was listed in another section of the code and I, so I left it. Um, so the intent of this ordinance is actually to just not, is to loosen those restrictions because I think we're in the day and age that it is less important to, you know, ensure that a building doesn't have a full bathroom because it might turn into a dwelling unit. Yet if it were a full dwelling unit, we'd be like, oh, go for it. So it's, it's trying to, um, come up to date with what we do allow and not then over-regulate things that somehow got left out. So that's the intent of this, is to deregulate, actually.
Okay, so a garage would be a building?
A garage would be a building, um, anything enclosed.
Storage shed would be.
Is a building, anything with, and we changed that too because I thought the definitions, you know, of, you know, for housing of people or things was a little confusing. So just changing a building to be that of four walls and a roof and a structure being anything that kind of is attached to the ground or requires attachment to the grounds.
Even if some of them are maybe temporary or not permanent or, you know, like, some of those things are just sitting on the ground, do those need permits? No?
No, and a lot of these will not need permits. Um, the permits are still, um, as required in our, our processes, you know, twenty fifty, one hundred, don't quote me on that, you know, what requires design review. But it is the sort of thing that if someone comes forward with a building that doesn't need a building permit, may not need a, a planning permit, but then you're, we may have to say, actually, you have to move it. You either have to be within six inches or three feet because that is our, our ordinance. If you go to Home Depot and plop a, you know, a shed within two feet of your rear property line, are we going to go out and do anything? No, but if someone were to, if they were to ask us where they could place it, we would let them know and/or if there were a complaint, we would follow up on that as well.
Hmm. Okay, and then my only other kind of question was about, um, attachment to item B, no openings perpendicular to the non-conforming wall, I guess if it's within three feet.
Correct.
And I get confused about the fire codes sometimes.
So no openings within, within three feet of a wall?
So even on a perpendicular wall, you're saying there's no opening?
Within three feet.
Within three feet, and I don't know if, is that fire code also? Yeah, even on the perpendicular.
Isn't that just like R two occupancy, you can't be within three feet, and R three occupancy, it's five feet, right?
Yeah. Okay, uh, that was all, just to clarify that. Okay, so let's close, uh, let's go to public comment. One more question, let's go to, okay, one more question then.
Uh, I don't know, I, I know, like, you know, people don't do that much, but like, if a garage is detached, would that be considered as accessory structure or?
Yes, it's would, yes.
And so they would be able to push it to the lot boundary like six inches if they want?
If they wanted and if it was only eight and a half feet in height, if it's over eight and a half feet up to twelve feet, it would need to be the three, the three feet from the property lines, yeah.
Then it has to be six feet away from the main structure.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any public comment on this item?
If you'd like to participate or speak on this item, please use the raise the hand icon. Nope.
Okay, since there's no public comment, we will move to commissioner discussion. Anyone, any comments? Or we go to a motion to approve?
I'm happy to comment and, and make a motion, but this just seems like sort of common sense code cleanup, um, to make the code make a little more sense and be consistent. So, um, with that, I'm happy to make a motion, keep things moving here and move item seven dash three, um, with a recommendation, uh, of approval to the city council.
I'm sorry, actually, I have one more question.
Which as well?
We're jumping the gun. Okay, please, you go first?
Motion can just sit in the background while you guys talk.
Yeah, the motion can stand, um, but go, go ahead with your question.
Okay, so, uh, now since we are allowing commercial properties to have access to structures, I'm assuming that most of the structures would be used for storage, you know, also storage, like, not all of them, you know, like, it depends, like, what is the main use, but like, you know, there would be typical tendency, like, you know, they would use structure, accessory structure for storage and some other kind of non-active use.
Correct, and this is where that kind of dirt of regulations, it was very unclear whether they were allowed to have accessory structures or not. So that's where it just makes it clear that they can, most commercial, and I shouldn't say most, but many commercial properties do have accessory structures anyway, and it was, we regulate them. So it was, we were using for commercial, just whether it met the, you know, because generally there's not setbacks or we were just using the setbacks of the main building. So again, this is really to apply, um, to apply regulations that we can apply consistent in people.
Which I think is great, yeah, it clarifies that, but like, if in case it is used for storage, you know, there are lots of code, you know, uh, related to storage, what kind of storage and, you know, like hazardous storage or anything. So do we have any code section that, you know, drives or controls that use?
Um.
Considering that now, you know, if a structure is like, you know, right next to the property line, and then if it is being used for, you know, a storage that is not safe?
Right, so we don't have that, I, I mean, I don't know if like the storage of hazardous or, you know, I wouldn't, maybe non-hazardous, but wastes or things.
Yeah, if it is being used by commercial activities or whatever, we don't know, we know what kind of.
Correct, and I'm not sure who would regulate that. Um, we wouldn't, you are all welcome to add a condition, you know, prohibiting storage of hazardous wastes or hazardous, makes it sound, um, flammable. I don't know, flammable, could be newspapers, though. Um, but currently, we don't have anything like that and this ordinance amendment doesn't address that.
So we don't have that anywhere in our code?
No, not in our, not in our zoning ordinance. There may be other sections of the municipal code or other state laws that would regulate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pilch, uh, question or?
Yeah, I guess I'll start out with some, uh, questions. So the, um, the previously only a toilet and a sink were allowed and, and, but now a full bathroom is allowed, uh, and so that would include then, I guess, a shower or a bathtub, uh, if someone wanted that. Um, but cooking and sleeping accommodations are prohibited, is still, um, yeah, sleeping, I understand because that gets into, you know, the building probably is more an accessory dwelling unit, but what about, uh, cooking? Can you explain why cooking would still be prohibited?
Um, the reason that staff chose to still keep cooking out of it was to, was, we just felt if you have a bathroom and a, and, and cooking facilities, you're, you're pretty much an ADU, so just go down that route. I felt that, staff felt that by allowing cooking and full bathrooms and accessories, accessory structures, that starts to blur the line that, well, is this an accessory structure? Is it, I don't know why, um, it's just as easy to do in an ADU, so that was part of it.
Okay, well, I, I suppose it's not a, a big deal, but I'm thinking of the transition to more work at home and I imagine, uh, I, I, well, I know, uh, some people around town who have, use an accessory structure as their, um, uh, office. And, uh, it, if you do work a full day in your structure, you might want to cook lunch or heat lunch, um, uh, but I suppose that that can always be done by a hot plate and a microwave, so, uh, a full kitchen certainly isn't necessary, but that's the only.
Yeah.
Reason I would think that you might want to allow cooking in your accessory structure.
I also know several folks who use their ADUs for their home offices. So again, I think that it's just, it doesn't prohibit, you know, you can build an ADU and use it for your home office, we don't regulate that, oh, you must have a household living there. So I think it was really just to, just kind of keep the distinction of what an ADU is as opposed to an accessory structure.
Okay, thanks, that was my only question, comment.
Um, so I heard, well, we're not going to add an, um, anything about hazardous waste, was that the concern?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know.
Hazardous materials, let's say.
Yeah, I don't know what is the likelihood of that, but like, you know, since we are, you know, permitting accessory structures on commercial properties now, it is likely that those would be used for storage, yes, in most cases.
Seems like, uh, might be vague and hard to define.
I know.
So I think maybe that's left out of this.
Right, yeah.
Okay, uh, the motion stands, uh, if there is a second.
I have a second.
And we'll go to a vote. Commissioner Moment?
Yes.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Wadi?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so that motion passes and we will move on to item seven dash three, mechanical equipment, residential, et cetera. And staff, would you like to, presentation?
Yes, I will bring it up and start this slideshow. Sorry, we'd zoom, the top is hidden, so I have to wait for it to go away. There we go. And, okay, so, good evening, commissioners and members of the public. Uh, my name is Mirhan, associate planner with the city, so plan, uh, planning building manager, Leslie Mendez, and I are here tonight to present some amendments on current regulations for mechanical equipment for the planning and zoning commission review and recommendation. So we'll give a quick refresher on how we got here or the why of the proposed amendments, if you will. Uh, the city's climate and adaptation plan, which was adopted in December twenty nineteen, identified building electrification as a key strategy in reaching the city's emission reduction goals. In Albany and other cities, a low-hanging fruit way of achieving building electrification is to replace existing mechanical equipment that runs on gas for heat pump-powered systems which fully run from electricity. However, current setback regulations here in Albany make it difficult to install mechanical equipment on smaller and narrower lots. Um, so therefore, amendments to these regulations would further facilitate their installation and lower barriers, barriers to building electrification. Um, so staff presented some amendments to these regulations during the October ninth, uh, planning commission meeting and to the public. Based on feedback, uh, received at that meeting, staff have prepared revised draft ordinance amendments regarding setback requirements for mechanical equipment for the commission's review. So we shall, we will cover, we'll go over those in the next slides. Um, so again, so during the October ninth meeting, commissioners and the public voiced support for the amendments, but some folks also raised concerns that the proposed amendments were not flexible enough. So the following list is a summary of the feedback received. So, um, you know, there was overall support for the amendments and, um, however, some comments were also received on the following. That the amendments to the code should have more lenient location allowances for heat pump equipment to facilitate their installation on smaller and narrower lots, that screening requirements should not apply to wall-mounted mechanical equipment, that some types of equipment such as solar panels, uh, should be exempt from screening and performance standards. Um, and, um, so yes, comments were also received about the need to have the amendments reach a good balance between leniency and impact considerations and that the amendments, um, just as a reminder, it was also discussed that the amendments can be modified in the future if needed. So, uh, the revised amendments presented for review incorporate this feedback received, uh, during the previous October planning and zoning commission meeting, um, as you can see here, so it is important to remember that all amendments to the code must meet the purposes within the same, within the code, right? Some of which include to protect and promote the public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, prosperity and general welfare, to ensure a harmonious, convenient relationship among land uses, and to improve the city's appearance. So that's, that's written within the approved, codified, um, purposes of the planning and zoning ordinances. So within this framework, the amendments must strike a balance between reducing barriers to building electrification and meeting these code purposes of protecting and promoting public safety, peace, comfort, et cetera, right, and harmony. Um, so changes since the last meeting will be shown in bolded text, um, on the following sites, slides. So with, before we go over these amendments, we're, here's a list, list of what we'll cover. First, we'll talk about the new standards and their applicability, and then we'll go over proposed amendments on standards for setback and location screening standards and performance standards applicable to mechanical equipment. Oops, okay, I jumped ahead. All right, um, let's see, so yes, applicability. Currently, the main code section regulating mechanical equipment only applies to residential properties. The proposed amendments expand applicability to all mechanical equipment, not just on residential properties. However, language has been added to explicitly exclude solar panels from the regulations, so we've added that, uh, based on feedback received. Um, in terms of setback and location standards and requirements, so section twenty twenty-four one eighty, which is mechanical equipment for residential, requires a five-foot setback from the side yard for mechanical equipment installed on residential zone properties. It is not permitted in a front or rear yard. It is not permitted in a front or rear yard area. The current code does not specify setbacks for mechanical equipment on non-residential properties. To facilitate the installation of heat pump equipment on smaller lots while simultaneously complying with safety regulations and complying with the purposes of the zoning ordinance, the proposed amendments would. One, allow mechanical equipment to be installed in a rear yard in addition to an interior side yard. Reduce the setback from five feet to three feet for ground-mounted equipment. Third, clarify that setback requirements also apply to rooftop-mounted equipment. Four, allow installation of mechanical equipment on single-family duplex residential properties in a street-facing yard, for example, a front or street-side yard, side yard, if a three-foot clearance is not available in either the rear or interior side yard. Equipment installed in a street-facing yard would be subject to the following criteria. So it has to have a maximum height of three feet measured from grade. It would have to be, have a ten-foot setback from the front property line. If it is located on a street-side lot line, it would have to have a minimum of three-foot setback, and it should be perpendicular to the street-side lot line so that the fan exhaust does not, is not directed to the right-of-way, and it must be screened. So this, this is diagram showing the current setback location regulations. So bear in mind, many lots in Albany are smaller and narrower than what is represented here. As we have previously discussed, the current code requires a five-foot minimum setback from the side yard for mechanical equipment installed on residentially zoned properties, leaving the light green area to install mechanical equipment. So again, in many of our lots here in Albany, that's just not possible. It doesn't leave enough room for that. Again, so the code does not permit them in a front or rear yard area, which makes it even harder to install this equipment. On a separate section of the code, wall-mounted equipment for all types of land uses is allowed to encroach into the rear yard by a maximum of three feet, but not allowed to encroach in any other required yard. This is shown in the blue shaded area. So that's not too generous either. Sorry. I lost my turn of thought. I'm sorry? Oh, oh. So you can see here that there are different regulations for residential only and for wall-mounted, which may cause confusion. As mentioned previously, amendments would also clarify and simplify requirements. Sorry. And finally, equipment may also be installed on the roof, which is shown in the, in yellow here. Now, the next one shows the proposed setback location regulations. So this graphic shows how with the amendments, there would be a decrease, decrease to the interior side yard setback from five feet to three feet from any mechanical equipment that is less than five feet in height. So basically, ground-mounted as measured from grade. This is shown on the dark blue hatched area. This would apply to all equipment's type, equipment types, whether installed on residential or non-residential, and regardless if they are ground or wall-mounted, but as long as they are no more than five feet in height. So the amendments would also allow equipment to be located in the rear yard, as well as interior side yard, providing greater flexibility and leaving the required three-foot clear path for emergency responders. For equipment installed higher than five feet from grade, there would be a larger five-foot setback requirement, including rooftop-mounted equipment. This is shown on the green shaded area. This would be to mitigate potential nuisance that these higher-installed units may have on, for neighboring properties, as we will show on the next slide. To facilitate the installation of heat pump equipment on smaller lots while simultaneously complying with safety regulations and complying with the purposes of this zoning ordinance, the proposed amendments would also place setback and location requirements for all mechanical equipment in one single subsection, as we said. Clarify that the setback requirements also apply. So basically, I'm just repeating myself. We're, we're pretty much simplifying and clarifying the language so that it's easier, the regulations are easier to understand and apply and implement. Now, as we said, if there's no space, physical space on the rear or side yard to install a mechanical equipment, then we would allow, we would allow the front yard, the equipment to be installed in the front yard with the conditions that we explained before, with the setbacks on the front yard and the three-foot setback on the street-side yard, as long as the equipment is not higher than, I believe we said, three feet, et cetera, et cetera. So it's basically what I already explained on the previous slide. So yeah, let's talk about screening. So based on feedback that we received during the October meeting, so we are proposing to remove screening requirements for mechanical equipment for residential, single-family, and duplex properties unless the equipment is located in a street-facing yard, right? Screening on rooftop equipment on multifamily, commercial, and mixed-use buildings in all other zoning districts except for commercial mixed-use and public facilities, zoning districts remains in the code. Screening does not need to be opaque, and they be made of dense landscaping to allow airflow. So right now, the screening standards have language that required screening to be opaque and solid. So that would not be conducive of, kind of like helping these type of equipments and to have airflow required for their function. So yeah, now talking about the performance standards. So all mechanical equipment must comply. So for instance, let me see, let me just go down. I have a lot of information here. So, I'm sorry. So yeah, we should remember, so this is a reminder that staff would like to put forward. So we should remember that the purpose of the adopted performance standard is to establish standards of performance for uses of land and buildings in all districts. So the goal is to protect properties and community against potential negative impacts caused by these uses. So we must understand basically that these standards not only apply to mechanical equipment, but also to activities related to construction, operation, and maintenance of sites, buildings, and other uses. So the reason we're mentioning this is because during the last meeting, there seemed to be a little bit of misunderstanding in terms of like, why are we making these changes? Or can we change these other standards? But this would not really be applicable for mechanical equipment. And what we're discussing today is performance standards that would apply only to mechanical equipment. So as we mentioned in that meeting, as Albany households embrace electrification, staff has also experienced an increase in neighbor complaints related to noise and air impacts from equipment in neighboring properties. Taking this into consideration and the need to reach that balance, we talked about. So we're saying that, we're proposing that, that the ordinance amendments explicitly state that all mechanical equipment is subject to performance standards. Add blown air as a mitigable impact under performance standards. Blown air as in air blowing into people's homes, windows, and yards, and which has been the subject of complaints received by staff, and require additional screening and/or acoustical testing to ensure compliance with performance standards. So yes, staff notes and acknowledges that feedback received during the past commission meeting to remove language in the performance standard section not applicable to mechanical equipment was not heated because, as I mentioned, performance standards apply universally to buildings, uses, and operations throughout the city, and are not limited to mechanical equipment, which is the purpose of these amendments. So yeah, simpler and clearer regulations, just to, I won't go through all these. I've already kind of repeated myself many times. And a very important aspect of these and any amendments is to align these regulations and amendments with city policies and goals, such as the general plan, conservation and sustainability element, with the purposes of the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned before, climate action and adaptation plan, city council strategic plan initiatives. And with this, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved Resolution 2024-02 recommend that the city council adopt these amendments to the Planning and Zoning Code related to mechanical equipment units. And so upon recommendation of the updated ordinances to the city council, staff will incorporate any comments received and schedule before the city council for review and adoption in what is estimated to be perhaps next month. Yeah, with that, the presentation concludes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Looks like a very complete effort and a lot of work. Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff and commissioners? Commissioner Moment?
I have a question, not directly related to the new code changes, but one section that is part of the existing code, but that might, you know, affect the new changes. So previously, in section 20.36.020, we had the section of mechanical equipment screening to be, you know, screened from all sides visible from public view. We removed that. And then part of that was included in the code section that is 20.24.110. In section D, we have subsection four conformity on page, what page is that? Three of attachment two, exhibit A B. It says, "The landscaping and screening requirements of this subsection shall be satisfied by all property owners as applicable within five years of the date of adoption of this chapter." What does that mean? And because, you know, I'm asking that because now since we are putting this screening requirement under that section, how that, you know, is going to be interpreted?
So just to be clear, we're on the literally same page. Are you looking at page three?
Yeah.
And then four, yes, please.
Okay. Sorry. So as you mentioned, this is something that's been in the existing ordinance, and we didn't change it. The language, when they adopted the screening requirements is, is, what it's essentially saying is that there's no grandfathering in, that all, all properties are subject, all applicable projects and properties are subject to these requirements and must come into compliance within five years. So other ordinance changes, you may have something that doesn't comply, and then you're grandfathered in. What this section says, since it's about screening and not about installation, is, is that you will need to comply. You will, if you had something that didn't have screening, you would have five years to put this right.
So, okay, but it doesn't apply to the new construction? Like if, you know, there is, let's say, you know, someone puts something on the roof, then they have to screen that, you know, at the same time as they are going to install the equipment there?
So if they are installing something on the roof that currently, as modified, would require, I'm not sure what we left, multifamily, I think, would still need to screen rooftop equipment, just generally behind a parapet anyway. But anyway, so they would still need to comply by this. So that would be part of their, you know, building permit. Do you have the screening for this? Maybe I'm not understanding your question. So new projects have to comply with current regulations.
Okay.
If previously a project had to be screened and the changes are modified that they no longer need to screen, they could always take the screening away.
Got it, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or no? I don't really have any questions. So why don't we go to public comment?
Oh, we have more people. Okay. Nick Peterson.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for considering us. Nick Peterson with Albany Climate Action Coalition. It's really important that we do facilitate people making the effort to decarbonize their lives. And, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be able to do everything and please everyone. But it seems like this is a rather minor change to make. There's still a lot of consideration, especially in the performance standards, to cover any concerns about noise and whatnot. But, you know, the visual aspect of the, between two yards, it really varies a lot in Albany. And someone just objecting to seeing a piece of equipment up against the neighbor's house, even three feet, seems to be kind of a high hurdle to get by. So eliminating that possibility is, is good. So I think anything that, that makes it easier for our population, our residents to install heat pump-based equipment and have the compressors, which these days are, are pretty quiet, you know, they, they make more like a white noise murmur rather than, you know, some kind of loud blowing noise. Again, you know, this will help people make the changes that need to happen in order to reduce their, their pollutants from using natural gas. So please, I recommend that you adopt these, and they're gonna work well for Albany. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. This is Lucinda Young, another member, Albany resident, and also another member of the Albany Climate Action Coalition. I want to thank you for these revisions. I attended the meeting, I guess it was last few months ago when these were initially discussed. I do want to take a minute. I think we can get really bogged down in details. I fully support making installation of heat pumps more accessible. I've gone through a huge deal in my house because I had a five-foot setback, and it was not possible to put in a heat pump, and have ended up spending a whole lot of money to make various configurations to make it possible. Had we had a three-foot setback, it would have saved me a huge amount of money and headache. And I was committed to getting rid of the gas. So I went ahead and went through the expenditure, but I can guarantee you, I've got a lot of Albany residents that either wouldn't have the financial ability or would not be willing to make the financial sacrifice. So I applaud you for this change, reducing it to three feet. I do want to mention, I think we can get really bogged down into details, and I think it's important to, for us to take a moment and step back, that what we are trying to do is achieve our climate goals as part of our climate action and adaptation plan, and to further our climate emergency declaration. And I think it's important to step back and realize that right now, we've got 100,000 of our California citizens in LA that are having to flee due to wildfires that climate scientists are telling us are more intense and more frequent due to human-caused burning of fossil fuels. And it's very important to realize that these heat pump, loosening up these heat pump restrictions are such an important action to allow us to address this climate crisis that we are in the midst of, and that we should all be really particularly feeling today with so many people in LA undergoing, undergoing millions of dollars of loss. There's five people who have died. So I urge you to pass these. I did have one question I thought was confusing. The, this just deals with the screening requirement. It's not a huge deal, but it was not clear to me in D3F, does the requirement for screening, is it intended to only apply for multifamily, mixed-use, and commercial buildings? Is that, is that requirement, um, limited to that? Or is it, does the screening requirement apply to all, all homes with street-facing yards?
Okay, sorry, your time's up. I think you're actually about D3F?
E3F.
E3F or D?
D, I think it's D3F. Let me see if I can pull it up again.
Okay, well, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That was a little confusing to me.
Oops, sorry.
All right, thank you for your comments. Are there any other?
Anyone else wishes to speak?
Online?
No one in, no one in the chambers and no one else online.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close public comment and move to commissioner discussion.
Can we answer?
We could look at D3F first.
Do you want to answer that?
Yes, so I believe that your reading is correct. So yes, it would, the screening requirement would only apply to, so. So yes, it would, the screening requirement would only apply to, so all vertical sides of mechanical equipment within street-facing front of exterior side yards in all type of land uses and only to, for rooftop mechanical equipment and appurtenances on multifamily, mixed use and commercial buildings. So basically, if it's a single-family residential or a duplex, we're not talking about multifamily or a commercial or mixed use, and screening would only be required if the mechanical equipment is in a street-facing, on a street-facing yard, right? But if we're talking about multifamily, mixed use or commercial buildings, yes, rooftop mechanical equipment would be required to be screened, as well as, you know, any, any other equipment that is facing the street. However, rooftop equipment located on properties located in the commercial mixed use and public facilities zoning districts would be exempt. So hopefully that's not even more confusing, but yeah.
To summarize, instead of requiring screening of all mechanical equipment, we limited it only to ground-mounted mechanical equipment in a street-facing yard for kind of single and duplex properties and then roof-mounted on major projects as long as they're not located in the CMX, which is our industrial district, which seems difficult as well as for our public facilities, for the same reason as exempting them for accessory structures. They have equipment needs that we can't and do not want to restrict for emergency responders.
Would anyone like to start the discussion?
If no one else jumps in, I'm happy to again. This seems very straightforward. I feel like you guys have captured a lot of the conversation and I think that the principles that you guys were working with of keeping it, sort of threading that needle of requiring screening where it's the most visible and sort of in your face, but being a little more lenient with placement and screening on side and rear yards where it's just sort of a practical reality of how we need buildings to adapt moving forward, seems like a pretty innocuous set of amendments and I am supportive as drafted.
Okay, thank you. In fact, this is the first time you've seen this. Or did you, were you heard before? I thought you missed one or two times.
In concept, maybe?
You've, you've received a few packets. I think that one meeting you were absent and then the next one was canceled, so yeah.
Okay, anyone else or? Well, I had some thoughts, comments. You know, with the idea of reducing barriers, reducing, I really was thinking that I'm fine with allowing them by right or, you know, not, not saying not permitted, but allowing exterior side yard placement of mechanical room, I'm 100% fine with that. You know, and I'm even fine with it in the front if there's some, you know, reasonable place to put it. You know, the aesthetics of these things don't bother me at all. You know, when they get mounted up higher, yeah, it would be more of an eyesore if it was on the front, but if it's three feet or lower, you know, I really don't have a problem with loosening the restrictions. I mean, the whole idea is to reduce barriers, make it more flexible, and sometimes the best place would be in the exterior side yard. So I'm okay with actually saying it's okay in those places, you know, with screening in the front yard or side yard, perfectly fine with me. And, you know, in a way, you let the marketplace decide. If people want to put it in their front yard, you know, that would be their choice. And some people might think it's not aesthetic, but, you know, these machines are getting much more compact and, you know, very clean-looking generally on the outside. And if there's some screening or planting in front, I would be fine. You know, I guess with, I guess I'm a little bit, seems like there's a kind of a contradiction between the no air blowing and then screening that's going to, I mean, you're going to have, how else are we going to prevent air from blowing onto a neighbor's property unless it's like completely screened, solid? So I think something, I think we have to, I think we should loosen the restriction on no blown air perceptible on the other side of the property, because these things are going to create air currents even if you put some sort of small screen in front of it. It's going to create air currents as it blows around and moves around, especially in a sort of a narrower side yard. I think the restriction should be, I think it says no blown air, right? There was one section, no blown air. It was, you know, my thing is that blown air, it's not harming anyone, it is not noxious, it's not a pollutant. I think we could relax about that a bit. So I would propose, where is it? Thought I saw it on sheet. Is it?
It is included in attachment to exhibit A C, which is 2036.020.
I have B, is it B?
B, as in boy.
Well, I think there just has to be some, well, a balance. I mean, these things move air, not a lot of air, generally, the smaller, better ones. The bigger, kind of old-fashioned AC-type units move more air and they blow them straight up. The smaller ones blow them horizontally. So, you know, if, if we're going to have a standard that says no blown air can be, I can't find this exactly. Just barriers, I'm looking for.
I have it on, on the screen.
Okay, yeah, I really, I really have a problem with no blown air or, no blown air shall be emitted that is detectable at or beyond property lines. I mean, there's going to be some air movement, a little bit of, it's almost like a gentle breeze, but, you know, how are you going to actually achieve that, practically speaking? Because the only way to do that would be to put up a solid barrier that's like, you know, a fence six feet high. So I don't see that we are requiring that. We've talked about screens up to three feet high and they don't have to be impervious. But the only way to practically achieve that would be to put up a screen that's solid. So I would suggest that we relax the no blown air detectable at. I mean, what, you know, you hold up your hand, you feel a little air movement. Where do you go from that, from there as a practical matter, as a practical matter between neighbors or within a building inspector or a complaint? I don't know. I think we need to relax that. So I would suggest we.
What about the sentence that was removed? What about just adding?
Well, I think it should, can be said that it, blown air should be mitigated. I don't think it can be eliminated.
I think.
But what about that sentence? I mean, that sentence basically says, I think what you're saying, be replaced, addressed by mitigating.
I would say instead of prevent, the one that struck out right below one, I would say just keep that sentence or air ducts or air, blown air to mitigate adverse impacts. We're not going to eliminate it entirely, I don't think. I mean, I've installed these, they, they make air currents and even if you're, even if you have a six-foot fence there, you could conceivably say that air is going to move over that six-foot fence a little bit, but it's not harming anyone, it's not bothering anybody. I would suggest we relax that and change it to instead of, I mean, really just blown air. Air contaminants, sure, that's a different story. What are air contaminants? That's more like kitchen exhaust, fumes or something, or, I don't know.
Yeah, but, you know, I think we should also, this applies to all kinds of buildings.
Yeah.
We are looking at, I think, you know, focusing more on single-family homes.
I think so. I mean, I think that's where these, that's where the barriers are to adoption. It's not so much barriers for multifamily for this kind of equipment because it's kind of, it's the current standard to use heat pump technology to heat and cool multifamily. So another thought I had was for screening standards, it's item E, minimum height, let's Minimum height of screening devices shall be six feet. But that, okay, that's like the height of a fence, that's the height of like screening roof equipment.
I'm sorry, where, where are you?
Item E, let's see, E1 height in, I think it's in the screening section.
So I would like you to go on, but I want to remind the commission that the screening requirements as well as the performance standard in this, we can do, they are global for everything in the city. So I just wanted us to be aware, very cognizant that if we're changing it, we're changing it for everything. This isn't just for mechanical equipment. So that doesn't mean modification shouldn't be proposed and recommended, but just that we're aware of that.
Well, maybe it, I'm trying to find a way through this. It would be, I would say match height of equipment for residential or for single-family heat pumps or three-foot minimum, match height of equipment. Make an exception for.
To clarify, the six feet is the current requirement, right?
Correct. We have not touched that.
And that's not being proposed for amendment? So they're just changing the language of adding in the word, you know, except as otherwise and required, or not otherwise planning on changing that existing standard.
Okay, was that, would the six feet apply to then the single-family home heat pumps?
Isn't the proposal to get rid of screening on non-street visible facades, so that would only apply on a street visible facade?
Exactly.
Only place a six-foot standard would apply?
And then, and then we stated three feet for that screening applied.
Three feet, okay. All right, that's good.
So also, if you see here under screening standards general height, it says, "Except as otherwise specified in subsection 2024.110C," which includes subsection, this exception about the height limit in the front yard. So whenever there's screening on arbor, trellis, fence, whatever, screening in the front yard should not be, so hold on, so there's, there's also the, should not exceed three feet in height within your required front yard. So basically, that's already included there. So that's the exception. Right, right, right.
Okay. And I had another thought about, we're exempting solar panels. And those, I would assume that would apply to solar PV panels and solar hot water panels, correct? And what about wind turbines? I would also exempt renewable energy.
We chose not to exempt wind turbine, turbines, sorry, not turbines, but to regulate them as accessory, what would be an accessory structure? That's not an accessory building, a wind turbine, turbines, sorry.
What if it's on a roof? Typically, it would be on a roof. You, you wouldn't put them at ground level or they wouldn't be, you know, we're not talking about 20-foot tall ones. There are residential scale ones and I would, it would be self-defeating to screen them. And the technology may change and get better and quieter and more applicable.
If it were a wind turbine on a roof of a single or a duplex, it wouldn't need to be screened per our new screening regulations.
It would not.
It would not. If it's on, I would consider a wind turbine mechanical equipment and per our current recommendation as presented by Mira, it would only need to be screened if it's on a multifamily or mixed-use building not located in the public facilities or CMX district, which is unlikely it would be located in those districts. It would not need to be screened otherwise.
But it would be screened on a, you said, multifamily?
Correct. Per the feedback we received at the last meeting, we eliminated rooftop screening requirements for single and duplex properties for mechanical equipment.
I would suggest we make an exemption for wind turbines as well, for all properties. Everybody would agree with that. Really, that's it, I think, but mostly it's the blown air thing that becomes more problematic for me.
If staff were to recommend a suggested friendly amendment that you'd want to suggest, it would be to divide section B, shown here, the performance standards, to keep air contaminants as is here and to make a new C for blown air that could say, "The effects of blown air shall be addressed in a manner to prevent adverse impacts on abutting properties."
Yes, that would be good.
Okay.
I would be happy with that, yeah. Did you say prevent or mitigate?
I was just using the existing language, but I think maybe mitigate as you suggested.
Anybody like to make a motion or shall I make a motion?
You might want to make the motion because you have a lot of changes to make.
Okay, okay. I would like to make a motion that we adopt, what item are we? Item 7-3, mechanical equipment, et cetera, with the amendment as noted for blown air that staff has written. And I would also say we should make an exemption for wind turbines on all rooftops to not require screening. And I would also propose that we permit mechanical equipment, heat pump equipment in front and side yards with the restrictions as noted in the other screening and.
So do you mean to eliminate screening?
No, not eliminate screening, just to allow heat pump equipment to be placed in front and exterior side yards.
Is it, it is under this? It's not differentiated from like AC equipment, right?
It's only allowed if you can't place it in.
In the other areas.
So he's, he's asking for it to be allowed.
You want to make it by right?
I'm, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not sure I'm totally supportive. I feel like you should try first and if it isn't feasible elsewhere, then that's fine. I think that's a good order of operations.
Okay, well.
Otherwise, that's just making it as like an aesthetic choice to place it in the front yard, which seems like if you could put it in the backyard, why wouldn't you?
No, I think most people would do that. I think in some cases it might, the best location in terms of the equipment, location, interior equipment, et cetera, could be in the front yard. I mean, and I would certainly think it could be in the side yard, exterior side.
Maybe staff, what would the, what would the sort of permitting process be if somebody technically could, by the physical parameters, put it in the rear yard, but practically speaking, it would make the most sense to design it and put it in the front yard, let's say? Would, would an applicant have an opportunity to request that and seek an approval to do that or would they be outright prohibited from doing that as drafted?
As drafted, they would be prohibited. We opted not to have a opt-out provision just for simplification because sometimes that's worth more than, so we didn't choose like unless, you know, create findings for when it would be permissible if you.
if you do have the room and choose not to use the room in your rear or interior side yard.
I mean, just my two cents on that, I'm more supportive of keeping it the way it is and asking staff to kind of keep track of if people are really having challenges. You know, if this seems to be a limiting factor and precluding people from designing it because it's, you know, three X the cost to design it in the backyard as opposed to the front yard and then people are discouraged from doing that, I would certainly love to get that feedback and be open then. But if it's just, it's easier to do it here or I don't want to, you know, I want to be able to have a backyard that's quiet and peaceful so I don't want to put this equipment in my own backyard. I want the rest of the public to look at it instead. Like, I'm not sure for those reasons I would be supportive of that amendment. And I think that's often, you know, the reason of I want to keep it sort of an uncluttered backyard. I don't want my mechanical equipment back there. I want to put it somewhere that it bothers somebody else, not my use.
Well, it would be subject to the setback requirements in the front yard and be pretty far from the property line. And the side yard is also subject to screening and particular. And if I could give an example, sometimes we have three heat pumps and one for water heating and sometimes two for space heating, one for the lower floor and one for the upper floor. So we have to place three of them around the house and sometimes you exhaust the options in the side yard and rear yard. And recently, we placed one in the exterior side yard and it was kind of in a corner and it was blowing not towards the street and it's not bothering anyone.
But in that case, you would have not been feasibly able to place it in either of the two locations at that point. The third one would have to and that would meet that standard.
Well, you could have, but also the the hot water equipment was closer to that place on the side yard. So it's also more efficient to place it closer to the place where the interior equipment is. We could have placed it in the backyard. We could have had three together, but that would have also been difficult. I mean, there was a stairway, I mean, there were factors. So, I mean, do we have support for allowing it in the front yard? I mean, I, or we can.
I support what you want to do.
Okay, well, let me finish the motion. Okay, and we will permit it in the front and exterior side yards as a motion. We have a second.
So there are three things, three changes here.
Yes.
I will second.
Okay, should we go to vote? Commissioner Moment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yes.
Commissioner Waddy? Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. That motion carries three to one with amendments.
And I would just like to acknowledge that there is someone who wanted to do public comment, but unfortunately was after the public comment period was closed. So please attend when this goes to council and we'd love to hear and/or contact Mira Ahan and/or me directly, Leslie Mendez, with any comments you have and we'll be sure to include your comments in the in the staff report that goes to city council.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will close item seven dash three, move on to item eight, new business. Anything there? No, from staff, no. And next meeting Wednesday, January 22, 2025. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.